Gentlemen, let me open a special meeting, City Council of Pearland for Monday, November the 25th, 2019. First of all, meeting is councilly put in discussion regarding economic development's strategic plan update. And I'll call on, I believe, Matt. Are you going to be handling that? Oh, our chairman is going to be doing this tonight.
All right. Good evening. My name is-
And this will last until six, until a little bit later.
Hopefully, 6:30, right?
6:30.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Brandon Dansby, and I'm the Chair of the PEDC Board of Directors and the Chair of the Steering Committee for the new strategic plan. Earlier this year, we began developing a new Economic Development Community Strategic Plan. PEDC convened the strategic planning process on behalf of the City of Pearland and its partners. The resulting plan will be a consensus-based blueprint that will guide our community's economic development actions in the years to come. While PEDC has a central role in carrying out the economic development activities of the community, this strategic plan is a community plan, which will require the support of many entities and community partners who all have a role in economic development to make this a success. A steering committee comprised of public, private, and nonprofit leaders, including members of the Pearland 2020 Implementation Committee, are guiding the process. City Council members David Little, Luke Orlando, and Trent Perez are members of our steering committee. And in addition, we have a number of other steering committee members here tonight. Would you please stand up? All right. Thank you all for coming. Now, I would like to introduce Matt DeVoe with Market Street, who is here tonight to provide an overview of the strategic plan process and the draft of the strategic plan.
Thank you, Brandon, and good evening. Thank you to Mr. Mayor, members of council, for having us here this evening to give you an overview of the economic development strategic plan process and where things are at and where they're headed. Thank you especially to all the steering committee members here in attendance tonight, members Little, Orlando, Perez, for your leadership of this process, and we're excited to tell you about it. Again, as Brandon said, I am Matt DeVoe with Market Street Services. We are a community and economic development firm based in Atlanta. We've been in business since 1997 and worked in nearly 170 communities around the country doing economic development planning. And so I'd like to tell you a little bit tonight about where we're at with Pearland. As Brandon mentioned, there was a diverse steering committee of public, private, and nonprofit leaders. That list is here behind you, as well as in all documents related to the process, and we really can't thank them enough for their hard work. So our goals here tonight, very quickly, in the short time that we have, are to provide a quick overview of the process, discuss the near-final strategic plan as it exists, and then leave some time, members of council, for your feedback, questions, comments, and so forth. So the process itself began back in June with an extensive community and stakeholder engagement process, where the Market Street team, with the help of the EDC, conducted numerous interviews and focus groups with leaders and stakeholders here in the community, also provided an online survey to anyone who lived or worked in Pearland who wanted to take that, and 24, nearly 2,400 responses to that, which is a tremendous response rate for a community of your size. That was followed up with phases two and three of the process, which involved extensive research marrying different forms of data and public input into a community assessment that really kind of gives a competitive snapshot of Pearland today and how things have trended in recent years, as well as an assessment of the implementation of the Pearland 2020 strategy, which had been launched in 2013, following another process in which Market Street was privileged to be involved. That has led us into the real meat of the process, which is the strategic planning and implementation phases. These are nearly complete. We expect that the process will wrap up in December, and that has resulted in an economic development strategic plan and will soon involve some implementation guidelines as well to activate that. So to set up the plan itself, I think it's helpful to just hit on a couple of key themes. There's tons and tons of data and input in the reports, but here are just a few really high-level things that dictated the shape of the updated economic development strategic plan. So a thing we heard over and over again from stakeholders in this community and members of the steering committee is that Pearland really does have a strong existing value proposition in terms of its schools, its proximity to major job centers, and a quality of life that makes a lot of people like to live here. And so supporting and maintaining those things, supporting those strengths, is an important consideration for this community as it shapes its next strategy. Also, a lot of great ongoing work from the Pearland 2020 Strategy and many other strategic planning efforts related to infrastructure, parks, and recreation and so forth that are either in development or have been implemented in recent months and years, and continuing that work is a priority. And you'll hear Market Street say a lot, "Any community that does this is jumping on a moving train," and that's absolutely the case here in Pearland. But, you know, this is a community as well that is maturing in some ways, undergone a period of rapid growth, and that is beginning to slow. We see that in some of the data. So a big question is, as this community matures, what comes next, and how does it maintain that competitive edge? So what we heard from the steering committee and stakeholders is that investments in quality of life and quality of place are necessary and appropriate to remain competitive into the future for this community, and some additional emphasis as well on leveraging the excellent workforce that is here, aligning some of the workforce and talent development assets that are based here in Pearland and around the region, as well as an increased focus on entrepreneurship and business growth. That led to the determination of a strategic framework, which is pretty simple. Start with two overarching community goals that I'll get to in just a second. That can be pursued through various strategic actions that are grouped into seven focus areas or categories that kind of just help frame a little elevator pitch. And within each of those buckets, there are numerous strategic initiatives that correspond to a program, an investment, or some type of action that can move this community forward. So I mentioned those two community goals. You'll see them here on the screen. Economic growth and diversification, making sure that this community is providing the kinds of opportunities that are needed to help residents of this community prosper and build wealth, and to ensure that this is a fiscally sustainable community going forward. Second is a community of choice in greater Houston. This is a community that, for many decades, has been a destination that people in this region want to go to, to live and to work and to be, and ensuring that going forward by focusing again on those quality of life and quality of place enhancements is a goal at the top of this pyramid, if you will. This is the strategy, then. There are seven focus areas, and I'll just kind of go through each of them very quickly, really a high-level overview, given our timeframe here, but just want to hit on a few highlights from the strategic plan itself. So the first focus area is business development, and this is really about growing business enterprises here in the community through targeted marketing and attraction efforts, trying to get new businesses to locate here, helping existing businesses that are already in this community grow and expand, and responding to their competitive needs and ensuring that the overall business climate is competitive. Really talking, when we talk about those things, we're often talking about businesses that can export some type of good or service to other markets to help bring in new wealth, but a need to recognize as well that an important aspect of this community's tax base is retail. And so looking at that as well, along with telling the story about how these things are happening. Among the sort of new things in this strategic plan that are different than what you would have seen before in Pearland 2020 or previous activities is the second focus area, and that is business formation and growth. This is really about focusing on an entrepreneurial ecosystem, both here in Pearland and connecting to a much broader system in the greater Houston region, looking at ways that that can be brought to bear here in Pearland through the addition of new programs, new opportunities for incentivizing business growth, and perhaps even some physical space as well for entrepreneurs to connect and to receive that assistance. Another really sort of new area that is a bit of a departure from previous efforts is the third focus area, site development. And so this looks at continuing some work that the PEDC and their partners have been doing to help activate areas such as Lower Kirby and the 35 corridor, and making them attractive for potential business locations to help grow the economic base here in Pearland. This is, the new piece of this is that 3.2 there, which would involve proactively assembling sites for development, so utilizing the tools, the economic development tools that are at the disposal of this community in the form of the EDC, and looking to eliminate some various barriers to development of sites. And that's something that we see many communities do successfully and something that really emerged as something that could help Pearland going forward and address a lot of challenges that emerge through input. The fourth focus area is centered on the various corridors in this community that are really sort of the lifeblood, in a lot of ways, of the commercial property and the tax base associated with that. 288, 518, 35, a lot of planning work has already taken place around those areas, and you see some of that reality as you drive around, and you'll see more of it going forward. This is a continuation of some excellent work that's been happening here in recent years. Following from that, in addition to sort of the planning and beautification of a lot of these corridors, there's also a need for investment in the actual infrastructure that is needed to support a growing and vibrant and economically thriving community. So investments in road and highway infrastructure, looking at future opportunities for transit connections to job centers, and stormwater management, and all the things that are needed from an infrastructure perspective. So that brings us to the final two focus areas, and they are really kind of centered around quality of life, quality of place, and talent. And so in our experience, in Market Street's experience, doing this work all over the country, these are really the most important ingredients for competitiveness going forward. Firms want to be near talented individuals, and talented individuals want to be in the kinds of quality places and quality communities that are attractive to them. And so Pearland has a great jump on some of these issues, and a lot of this is really about gaining that competitiveness and leveraging what is here. And so the sixth focus area is about quality of life and place, developing walkable, dynamic, mixed-use environments, catalytic projects that can anchor them, looking at recreation parks, some master planning that's occurring here related to trails and so forth, really kind of creating signature amenities, along with looking at options to diversify and maintain the housing stock going forward. And finally, workforce and talent, some excellent assets here in terms of wonderful school districts, some higher education institutions that serve the community, along with lots of nonprofit partners, and so bringing them together in alignment with the business community to help identify potential ways in which partnerships can be formed, that education and training pipelines can support private enterprise, along with looking at some specific opportunities to take advantage of the great diversity and youth that's in this community in the form of some programs centered around workplace inclusion, engaging young professionals and emerging leaders, to help build a stronger base of future leaders in the community. So that brings us through our strategic plan. I realize that is a very, very quick overview, but I wanted to just kind of touch on some of the highlights there, and at this time, I'm happy to take any questions, comments from our council.
Maybe you did, maybe you did too good a job.
Thank you, Mayor.
I've got one, you mentioned transit.
Yes.
We're not in the transit area for Metro in Houston because we've got economic development and use the money in that. Now, the thing I see is, I guess, the transit that we're trying to develop, you know, from here to the medical center and stuff like that. Is there anything you can add to that, trying to work in some area to increase that?
Sure. So a lot of the impetus for looking at transit has to do with the connections to some of these job centers, where a lot of people in Pearland live here and then work at, like, the medical center, for instance, and, you know, that's in the thousands every day that are going to a relatively small geographic area. So as you all know, there's a pilot program running from Shadow Creek there. I think that, you know, I'm not going to claim to be a bus transportation expert, but there are opportunities, I would think, there with the managed lanes on 288, potentially helping with some congestion for transit vehicles that could make that a really attractive option. And really, this is about looking at ways to make this community continue to be that destination of choice. So for people who are looking at places to live that could provide some commute options to where they want to work, broadening some transit could help with that. Now, obviously, there's some political challenges, funding challenges that are associated with that in terms of the metro service area and so forth, again, kind of beyond the scope of this process, but looking at ways to continue to work with regional partners to try to identify some long-term solutions for this, in addition to that short-term approach of the pilot program that has been engaged, I think is a real promising way to continue to maintain that edge.
Under the quality of life and place, down to 6.4, which is diversify and maintain Pearland's housing stock. We, of course, do not have any more large 3,000-acre facility, land, piece of land, or even some large ones, but we do have some smaller acreage and some smaller pieces of property scattered throughout the community. Could you enlarge on what kind of diversity you're talking about, perhaps?
Sure. So anytime we talk about an issue like this, it's important to point out that these decisions are always going to be up to council, how to best serve this community and best serve your constituents. The specific recommendations in 6.4 have to do with looking at utilizing some of those smaller sites as potential opportunities to continue adding residential product without necessarily looking at a large-scale subdivision. So there could be opportunities there for products like townhomes or high-end multifamily or condominium that could help utilize that land and provide some different housing options that are appealing to, you know, frankly, a lot of younger buyers, a lot of younger residents that are looking for different opportunities, different sorts of housing options. And so where appropriate, when appropriate, the recommendation here is to look into opportunities to do that from a, you know, from a regulatory perspective, but also, you know, potential, you know, as the market will bear.
Most cosmopolitan-type cities usually, as they start maturing, start having the same problem that we might have as we mature, and use available land space. They have solved a lot of that by going up, elevated type of housing, and in certain areas, that might be a plus for our community because it would draw certain types of elements as citizens into the community that would, that would appeal to, and it would also take less land to actually erect one of those with adjacent parking, of course, and, but have you all ventured into maybe other alternatives other than houses or residence or apartments?
Yes, so multifamily condominium, I think the, yes, so that you could potentially consider those types of options, which would be appealing to different types of residents.
If I may, kind of along that same vein, I agree to a certain degree with Mayor about, you know, the going up and so forth, but also one of the things that I missed, and going back to Councilmember Owen's point as well, seeing that we don't really have a lot of, you know, transportation options for people, given that if we start developing, we're going to have people that you may not have included in this talent pool that we've maybe referenced in here, and those people need a place to live as well. So, you know, taking into account, you know, affordable housing as well, just to make sure that that is planned out well in advance, so that it's not an afterthought. I think that's something that's going to be, you know, a very important and vital element, given that, you know, people are going to have to commute from farther and farther out in order to work at these developments. So, I mean, it's not something I wanted to overlook, and I didn't necessarily see that whenever I looked through here, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Should we, I think we should try to focus a little bit more on regional detention and retention. That's going to be an issue as we continue to build out in the city, where you're going to have people that can have property, but they're not going to be able to build as big of a development on that property as what they could. So if we're talking about trying to help get land ready for development, I think regional detention and retention should be looked at. As far as the transportation, I don't know how well the bus service is doing. I think that HOV or toll lane that's going to be put in on 288 may help it, but all the feedback that I get is it's too costly, and they're still sitting in traffic. So I don't know how successful it is, but I still think light rail's the way to go. Funding mechanism for that just does not exist. It's just extremely too expensive, and Houston Metro is not willing to put in anything on As far as 7-1, talking about partnering with some of the schools for future career, I think it'd be a great asset if we could partner with some of those students while they're still in high school at some of the career centers to provide some possibly goods to the city. We could partner with them for, like, park benches for the parks, different things that we could use around city facilities. I don't know why we're not doing that now, but they have welding shop, they have woodworking shop, they could be providing some of those kind of things as projects and give them a good experience for the career world.
In the discussions, did it come up the impact of the widening of 35, I'm sorry, 518 on the existing businesses? Was that part of being in the discussion?
So that certainly was a potential issue that came up during public input, and so if, in the corridor discussion, there is a master planning process related to the 518 Broadway corridor that will be developed. I believe that's already in motion or will be very soon. And so that's a conversation between text dot property owners, local officials here to kind of determine what are, you know, potential options there, and are there any ways to kind of, you know, mitigate those potential impacts while also maximizing the economic and aesthetic and all of the above potential of that corridor? And so I think that's certainly something that should happen as part of that planning process.
I guess to chime in, and I sat here for the 2020 plan and see how it's used. I mean, it's a great, great planning tool. I guess my concern is these seven focus areas, in my opinion, the first three are spearheaded by EDC, and that's kind of the EDC's core function. But then when we get into corridors and some of these other things, I guess my hesitation when this plan's brought to us from the EDC is it now, it gets interpreted that these are the marching orders to go spend EDC dollars on all seven focus areas. So I like the plan. It's good for what it is, but, and I don't know if it changed this time, but was there any discussion in terms of funding and who's doing all this, or is it just, hey, would you like a bigger park? Yes, let's not talk about the cost of it.
Yeah, it's a very good question, and so as part of the final phase of this process, we're developing implementation guidelines that will, among other things, identify who takes the lead on an initiative, who can help support it, and then what are some potential funding sources. And so for things that are very specific, like a specific program, we can provide a cost estimate for, obviously, for infrastructure projects and things of that nature. We're not going to get very detailed there, but I think that, I'll just hearken back to something that Brandon said in his introductory comments, which are, while this is an EDC-led plan, and the EDC will indeed have lots of leadership responsibilities in their wheelhouse, it really is a community strategy, and we often say it's a team sport. And so, or the business community, organizations like a Chamber of Commerce, or various nonprofits that might have a role in something. Obviously, if you think about some of these infrastructure projects, you're going to be talking about government funds, but typically a lot from the state and federal level, and trying to leverage those to the furthest extent possible. So I certainly think that part of this has to be setting some strategic priorities for the EDC, and I think that this plan does that, but also recognizing that there are certain things outside of their purview that are going to need to be accomplished, and putting the team together to do that is going to be an important part of the success for this.
And so we'll see the implementation piece?
Yes, so that's under development right now. We're going to talk about that with the steering committee on December 11th, and then shortly after that, I would expect that it would be available, and we'll work with the EDC on a timetable for that availability publicly.
And that's what it boils down to, right? I mean, all this stuff is a great idea, and we can outline it all, but until we've got the funds to pay for it, it doesn't really matter.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, and I think that the good news is that you are, like many Texas communities, you're fortunate to have some tools in place that can do this. You have some resources to invest in economic development, and you want to be wise with those, and you want to be good stewards of those funds, but you do have some resources in addition to, you know, what you would expect from, you know, involved an active private sector, from, you know, government funding for various infrastructure projects and so forth. So, you know, we certainly view this as a very attainable, ambitious yet attainable plan for the community. Thank you.
Do we currently have any private-public partnerships? I mean, I don't know of any company that's fitting the bill for anything in the city or paying a portion of anything in the city. Am I wrong? I think that ought to be something that EDC goes after also.
So I don't want to, I don't want to make a blanket statement here because I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I think that the, certainly what we've seen successful communities do is look for opportunities to do that. And so a good example could be around something like workforce and talent development, where there's a pretty clear benefit to the private sector for engaging in those types of activities. And so I think that that could, you know, certainly be, you know, one potential area where something like that would be beneficial, but again, in our experience, it can't just be the public sector doing it alone.
Yeah, I understand. It's just, you go to other cities and you see a lot of things that are sponsored by maybe large companies in that city, you know, like, I don't know, X, Y, and Z Park or so forth, where they've contributed to that. I don't know that we have anything like that, and I think that ought to be something that EDC's going after and looking at. And maybe we could get somebody to sponsor an auditorium.
You know, one of the things we did talk about was on the transit side, and I was just talking to Clay about it, see if anybody went back down to Metro. You know, we're not in the service area, but they can go up to the Beltway, and that was discussed with him, you know, a few years ago. But I do know that there is a letter from the FRA that's three years, maybe four years old right now. It says they're going to have to go outside their service district or service area in order to be profitable. And I would say with $2 billion that they just approved, or probably more than that, through Metro, you know, that could get the rail line right up to the Beltway, and we can partner with them on- can partner with them on the other side of transit-type thing, shuttle-type thing. But, you know, I don't know of any other place, when you start looking at it, at downtown, or actually into the medical center, the last time I looked at something on the land down there to build a parking garage, it's like $437 a square foot to build that, and then charging $20, $25 a day for the people working down there. And we got the largest number of people in any area as far as the zip code going to the medical center every day, working. I mean, I don't know, personally, I don't know any other area that the city of Houston or Metro could go to that would encumber that many people a day, probably riding the Metro rail to the medical center or to, you know, the sports facilities and stuff like that. I mean, it's just tremendous amount of people that would do that.
Research from the medical center that we've seen, and then data from the Census Bureau definitely indicate that there's a lot of people every day making that trip. It's, again, into the many thousands, and so, you know, I think that you're certainly on to something in terms of what the opportunities could be, and I think that the recommendation in the strategic plan is really just about being involved in that conversation and proactively pursuing that conversation, because it will take some work, and it's not something that gets solved in a strategic plan for one community, but definitely something that you want to be engaged in.
When I met with Metro and some of the senior staff met with Metro.
Two years ago?
Three years ago. Two years ago. They just really were not open to doing anything unless we funded it, and they wanted a lot of money to fund it. They just were not focusing on doing anything outside of the 610 loop. That may change in years to come, I don't know, but yeah, very costly, and I don't see us being able to do it without some kind of partnership with Metro or some other entity, but.
I think some kind of partnership is realistic, good, and when you look at it now, the whole landscape in Houston, Harris County, has completely changed, and they're looking for ways to do more things and, you know, as it is now, to work with it. So you've got a different group of people there at Harris County, and then the mayor of Houston, which appoints the chairman of the board down there, but there's three and two of the number of people that's on the board. So, I think, you know, I wouldn't say that they're going to welcome you with open arms, but I think, you know, at this point in time, it wouldn't be a bad situation to go there and set up a meeting and visit with them, or take out some of the people that are there, you know, to meet with them from the city or Harris County, one of the two. It's still an open process, you know? We looked at it when we put the Greater 288 partnership there to get the money for that, to build the tollways coming down this way. So, you know, that's something I would say was, you know, is worth making a visit or two at least and having the discussion. Things may have changed in the last two years, I think they probably have.
Yeah, I talked to some of the Metro board members just not long ago, probably six months ago, and there was no change.
Well, I still wouldn't, I wouldn't take it out of the, you know.
No, I think we need to continue the discussion, we need to continue to talk with them, keep open discussions with them. As things do change, maybe there's opportunity there, but as of right now, no, there's not, but I, I believe we do have to continue those discussions.
Yeah, I think keeping discussions, I'd, you know, I'd say, you know, I'd let them turn me down three times, and maybe it's four times in home run, you know, you can't ever tell. But if you keep going back to the door and discussing it, I think it's a good thing to do, because, you know, Pearland is growing, there's a lot of major developments going on down there and through the EDC, what they're doing on the west side of town off of Kirby over there, and, I mean, that's going to be guns, and a lot of it ends up at the medical center every day. You know, that's just like, I would love to see 288 be named the medical quarter, you know, because of everything that's going on, and EDC is well aware of that, too.
My only concern is the decline in sales tax dollars over the last couple of years, and where are we going to be at in the next couple of years? So I have concerns with that, that will hinder what EDC can do, especially if we're talking about some kind of partnership with Metro on light rail.
Just to kind of put a bow on this, what stood out the most to me over the course of this process is how much progress we've made since 2012, and, you know, of course, we're tasked here with talking about problems and finding solutions, but contrary to the gloom and doom, you know, we sometimes have here, and certainly more broadly in the news, we've made great strides here in Pearland since we did this exercise last in 2012, in terms of some really major business investment. Our citizens are getting more educated, more prosperous, higher incomes on average each year, and having a higher quality of life. So what this really underscored for me is that we're now at a crossroads where, as we mature as a community, we can be, we can be the place that once was the shiny best spot to be, and now is, as we can imagine, some other communities that used to be that, and now are has-beens and aren't so desirable, and people don't want to be there, or we can be a place where generation after generation, people want to come back to, people want their kids and their grandkids to live there, and we have to just be proactive about making sure that we can compete, not just with the people who are already here and retaining the awesome people we already have, but making sure that we continue to bring in great people. And so, I appreciate the goalposts being set by this. I think being able to track the metrics we set in 2012 and saying, we've made so much progress, I think these seven parameters are a really great goalpost for the next six years as we continue to ensure that Pearland remains a great place.
I think you have a fine strategic plan that you've put together. I think it's going to be a challenge. I don't see any low-hanging fruit in there, and I believe as you progress, you need to focus on some, achieving some of these, maybe report back to us the progress that you've made on something that you tied a ribbon on. And I think it's something, as we see this develop, I think we're going to get more public participation, and you're sure going to get as much participation as more than probably need from council, I know, and some of the other organizations in town. So I think it's, it's going to be a challenge. Pearland has sort of moved out, and there was a mass exodus into Pearland, and that left a lot of challenges, transportation and things of that type, and so I think you have a challenging plan. I think it's something that will be a significant improvement of our community when achieved, and I think if, so that most of us won't get discouraged and lose interest, find a few low-hanging fruits perhaps, and so we can show, see that there has been achievement in the process. And I think in that, in so doing, that you have learned the process of addressing some of the other challenges. So, we really appreciate your bringing this to us. I think it's something that we've needed a long time. Pearland is a very special community, and this is only going to make us more challenging from other people looking at Pearland saying, how'd they do all that? And I think it's going to be something we can be very proud of, and thank you for doing it with the people that you have chosen to put it together. So, thank you very much and appreciate your support to us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate, we're going to be moving now into our regular council meeting, which is And looking at our agenda, there does have item number three, says adjourn, and I'm sure sort of doing that. Thank you.